Good evening, everyone. This is the Tuesday, May 2, 2023, meeting of the East Long Meadow Planning Board. In attendance this evening are Russ Denver, Cassandra Chariswellow, Pete Punderson, George Kingston, Bailey Mitchell, and myself, John Torch. So first off, is anybody, I know Bailey is recording for meeting minute purposes, and obviously LCAP is also recording. Is there anybody else in the audience that is audio or visually recording the meeting at this time? And if so, just make yourself known. Seeing and hearing none. We will continue on. Approval of the minutes. So we have the April 18, 2023, meeting minutes. We should have gotten those in their packets. Are there any changes, revisions, additions to the meeting minutes?
I'll move to accept the meeting minutes of April 18, 23.
Motion's been made. Motion's been seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstention.
One abstention.
I was in here.
Okay, so that carries four yeses, no's, no-no's, and one abstention. All right, next item, Mr. Clerk.
Case S. Case SPRW 2023-14. Request for site plan review waiver for Marvelous Me Aesthetics LLC aesthetic service at 280 North Main Street, Suite 7. Assessors parcel ID 14-12-F located in an existing structure in the Commercial Corning District. Applicant Hannah Hubaz, 35 Linden Ave, East Long Meadow, Mass. 01028.
Is the applicant here, somebody representing the applicant? If you can just come up.
Oh, yeah. Sorry.
Just say your name, address for the record.
Hannah Hubaz.
So just kind of talk about, you can sit down if you want, just kind of the business, hours of operation, different things like that.
Okay. Basically, a spa. I'm going to start out probably with like more 24 hours, probably like Monday, Tuesday, and Thursdays, maybe Sundays. And then it's basically makeup, all skincare, body waxing, lash extensions. That's basically it.
Does anybody on the board have any questions for the applicant?
Just a number of anticipated employees that you might have.
Just me.
Okay.
Are you doing any permanent tattooing?
No.
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve.
A second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Any abstentions? That carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, next item, Mr. Clerk.
Case ANR 2023-02. Request by applicant for an endorsement of a plan believed not to require subdivision approval under subdivision control law for the conveyance of land known as parcel A-1, a 1.26 plus or minus acre lot from 311 Elm Street, Assessors Parcel ID 34-81-0 to 347 Elm Street, Assessors Parcel ID 34-75-0, located in the residency zoning district. Applicant Tony Bordoni, 347 Elm Street, East Long Meadow, Mass. 01028.
Okay, is there anybody other, the applicant or somebody representing the applicant?
Yep.
If you can just come to the front.
Take, take.
Just state your name and address for the record.
Antonio Bordoni, 347 Elm Street, East Long Meadow.
Okay. So just kind of go in briefly for us and the audience, just what do you plan to do?
I'm going to buy the extension land and pretty much add value, and my kids and my grandchildren will play, so it's a line lock, it's land lock piece of wood in the back of our yard. I think it'd be good for our kids and add value to our property.
Does anybody have any questions for the applicant?
He's got frontage.
I'll make a motion to endorse the plan.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? That carries unanimously. Have a great night. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, before the next item, I need to recuse myself for a potential conflict of interest.
Kathy, if you can read the second item or the third for the record.
Case ANR 2023-03. Request by applicant for endorsement of a plan believed not to require subdivision approval under subdivision control law for the conveyance of land known as parcel B, 0.02 plus or minus acre lot from 46 Donald Ave, Assessors Parcel ID 3B-39-624 to 50 Donald Ave, Assessors Parcel ID 3B-40-618, located in the residency zoning district. Applicant Jenna Molenari, 53 Gale Street, Springfield, Mass. 01108.
Okay, is the applicant or somebody representing the applicant either on Zoom or here? A hand.
Mike Smith here for representing Jenna Molenari.
Hi, Mike. How are we doing? So if you want to just go into what the applicants intend to do here, just explain for us and the audience.
Yeah, so quickly, the owner of 46 Donald is just transferring a 10-foot strip to the abutment at number 50 Donald's. Both are going to have conforming frontage and square footage in the zone.
Does anybody on the board have any questions?
What is the purpose of this?
They're looking to get a little more property for the Molenari parcel, a little bit of extra side yard.
Okay.
They both got frontage.
Shed needs to be moved, though.
Yeah. The shed's going to be relocated.
I would make a motion to approve it under the condition that the shed be moved.
The motion has been made.
I'll second that.
Seconded under the condition of the shed be moved.
Be moved.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? That carries four zero.
Thank you.
Definitely. Have a great evening.
You, too.
Can somebody let up? Next item, Mr. Clerk. Your whole business.
So, Mr. Chairman, prior to calling the next item, I wish to raise a really troubling email that this board received regarding the next item. So this board on March 22 received the following email from a Margaret Gorlay, who identifies that she is a resident at the Fields of Chestnut. It states as follows. "Thank you for holding another public hearing on 3/21/23 regarding the proposed warehouse on Chestnut Street. I was disturbed to hear the change in some planning board members' opinions based on insufficient real data. The planning board's discussion was notable for biased favoritism toward the proposed developer, respectful allowance of the proposed developer's staff to speak for prolonged periods when not presenting new information, and repeated cutting off and shouting at Attorney Pill before he could finish a sentence. In light of the dramatic shift in your conversation, I have two requests. First, I request that each voting member of the East Long Meadow Planning Board and each member of East Long Meadow Redevelopers LLC post on the town of East Long Meadow website the signed completed conflict of interest disclosures copied below on letterhead stationery. It goes as follows. Conflict of interest disclosures for planning board members. I, state your name, have or have not been offered a monetary incentive or other incentive, including stocked cryptocurrency, promise of future profits, services or discounts, or any other benefit from East Long Meadow Developers LLC, from a potential future tenant of the proposed warehouse on Chestnut Street, or from any other party who supports the proposed warehouse. Incentive one." And then she goes on to list all the potential incentives, monetary value, et cetera, et cetera, and the month and year that we either accepted or did not accept an incentive from the redeveloper, East Long Meadow Redevelopers LLC. And then she asks the redevelopers to do an affidavit as well, that they did not try to incentivize members of this planning board to vote in favor of this project or not. She then goes on to do an updated report to the Chair of the Long Meadow Planning Board. In her letter dated November 2, 2022, Cheryl Thibodeau, Chair, stated, "The Long Meadow Planning Board understands that there is estimated to be under 200 trucks traveling in and out of the facility per day, with a speculated 24 hours per day of operations. If I understand correctly, the March 21, 23 discussions suggested the estimated total number of vehicles traveling in and out of the proposed facility may now be up to 900s. Please notify Cheryl Thibodeau of the new estimated maximum total number of vehicles," in parentheses, "all vehicles, plus specification of how many trucks traveling in and out of the proposed facility, and publicly post her reply. Please also post my email publicly so others know whether or not my requests were addressed. I am disappointed by the backroom discussions and suppression of contentious information that appear to have occurred since the last public planning board meeting. Please try to be less biased and more focused on gathering and analyzing facts before your May 2, 2023, meeting. Based on the 'thin' data,' in quotes, you have discussed to date, you are far from finishing this valid, are you finishing this in a valid and safe manner? If you don't have the resources to fully investigate a proposal or to estimate and monitor future damages associated with a proposal, you don't have the resources to approve the proposal. Sincerely, Margaret Gorlay, resident of the Fields of Chestnut." Think about that for a minute, folks. Someone from the Fields of Chestnut is inferring that these nice gentlemen who have presented a proposal to build a warehouse, add value in the town of East Long Meadow, are somehow trying to bribe all of us sitting up here. Think about that. Think about how utterly ridiculous, childish, immature, self-centered, unprofessional that is. That is reprehensible. I have never met Margaret Gorlay. I wouldn't know her if she stood up and waved to me right here. I want you to know something. I have never met this gentleman, whose indicator he's the owner of the property, until he came to a meeting. I have never formally met Mr. Stratton, their legal representative. I know that he works for a very fine law firm here in East Long Meadow, and his law firm is in front of this board two, three, four, five times a year. How much sense do you think that it makes that he would try to bribe a member of the East Long Meadow Planning Board when he has to appear in front of us? Mr. Leveque. Where's Mr. Leveque? He's here three, four times. I've never met Mr. Leveque until I got on this planning board. And every time that he has presented, he has been professional in everything he has done, and everything he's presented to this board has been professional and up and up, and only up and up. Let me add further to this. When you are appointed to a municipal board in Massachusetts, you are required to take an oath of office. And it reads as follows. "I do solemnly swear to affirm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent on me according to the best of my abilities and understanding, agreeably to the rules and regulations of the Constitution and the laws of this Commonwealth." There are ethics laws that need to be followed. Every member of this board has to confirm and provide records to the town clerk here in East Long Meadow that before we can even sit through a meeting, that we've completed the ethics course required by the state. We're also required by the state to take this course every few years. I just did it again in late March or early April and provided the certificate to the Director of Planning and Community Development Office. I would suggest that Ms. Gorlay pay attention to that and maybe take one of these courses to find out what the obligations of the municipal officials are. With respect to your request, I reject your request. I find it offensive, and I think that you should provide a public apology to the members of this board, and I would hope that the developer and his representatives take real serious thoughts about any potential defamation of character for them.
Russ, I definitely understand where you're coming from, and I think, you know, if somebody wants to accuse me of that, they can do it, but I have known the four people up here, some for about a year or a few months, some for a couple of years, and, you know, these are four of the most professional people that I've been able to work with and have the opportunity to work with. So I really do reject that anybody has done anything underhanded in any type of way. We are here to try to understand, read the bylaws as the best we can, give residents the opportunity to speak. This has been one of the, I think, most divisive, quite frankly, one of the longest continued applications I have seen in my five years on this board, and I believe we have tried to be as impartial as possible. Some people will disagree with that. Some people will disagree with whichever decision we render once this finally, you know, once this comes to a vote. But we are, I believe, doing the best possibly we can to try to make sure that all the information is there, everybody is heard, everybody's had the opportunity. People have been able to email Bailey or us, they've been able to speak at multiple meetings that cumulatively have now been multiple hours. You know, people have come up to, I'm sure, a couple of us. The only people that I've talked to, I haven't talked to anybody, the applicants, the legal counsel for the Field of Chestnut outside this meeting, nobody. I've had folks come up, I've given my honest opinion about where things stand, or if anybody had any questions, but I reject the notion like, I think Russ said it well. I think Russ's words speak for themselves.
I want to thank Russ for saying what he said. I don't, I didn't really want to have to say that, but I take it personally. I've been on this planning board for approximately 17 years. No one's ever come up to me to ask me to do anything, and I'm not for sale, anyway. My opinion is my opinion. I'm here for the town in an honest, straightforward manner, and I reject that person's requirement that we sign any sort of affidavit saying that we're actually honest people. Well, thanks, Russ.
And just one other point before we continue on. I respect the request from the Chair of the Long Meadow Planning Board, but at the end of the day, we are making decisions based on the residents of East Long Meadow. Full stop. And I'm not going to apologize for that. So, Mr. Clerk.
This board is appointed as well, so she could, we will have an opening soon since George is leaving us, so she could also, if she wanted, apply to be appointed to the board, if she would like her opinion to be counted.
I am going to add a couple more things. So she said we should be keeping the Long Meadow Planning Board informed. If she paid attention to these hearings, which you can watch on LCAP through their YouTube, she might have made note that on several occasions, Mr. Kingston has said that he has been in contact with members of the Long Meadow Planning Board, I think specifically you referenced Walter Gunn. So they are familiar with what is going on. And if you think we have thin data, I did not, so I went through and rewatched all of these hearings on this twice. I did not see you present, and I did not see you present additional data. So you had an opportunity to present additional data. So instead of inferring that we're all on the take, or someone's trying to bribe us, perhaps you should have stood up and added more to the civil discourse that takes place. Ready?
Yeah. Do you want to read it into the record?
Case Site 2022-07. Request for site plan review for the construction of a warehouse building and associated site improvements at 330 Chestnut Street, Assessors Parcel ID 18-38-0, on a 40-plus 35-plus or minus acre lot in the industrial garden park zoning district. Applicant, East Long Meadow Redevelopers LLC, 1260 Stilton Road, Pistaskaway, New Jersey, 8854, continued from 9/20/22, 11/15/22, 12/20/22, and 2/21/23.
And also March 21, 2023.
And March?
21st.
21st, 2023. Thank you, John.
So I think first, before we go into the conditions, I think what would be helpful is to just go through quickly the standards for review. These are the standards that we have to consider. This is not just for this project, but any project under this umbrella. And I'm just going to, I'm going to read them so that everybody knows exactly what we are looking for as our review here. In reviewing site plans, the planning board shall consider the following. A) Protection of the abutting properties and community to minimize any detrimental use of the site. B) Convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site and the relationship to adjoining ways and properties. C) Adequacy of the methods of disposal of sewage and refuse and the drainage of surface and subsurface water. D) Adequate means of protecting wetlands, watersheds, aquifers, and well areas. E) Provisions for off-street loading and unloading of vehicles incidental to the normal operation of the establishment, parking, lighting, and internal traffic control. F) Provision of open space consistent with town master plan concepts. G) Protection of agricultural land within the proposed development and minimization in development impact on abutting agricultural land. H) The layout of design features such as vegetative buffers within developments which will integrate into the existing landscape. I) Consistency of the proposed development within the town master plan concepts. J) Compliance with the provision of MGLC 40A and the subdivision control law, the rules and regulations of state and federal agencies, the bylaw of the town, the bylaws of the town of East Long Meadow. That just gives a sense, as it's, I think, been referenced already, but just that it's the exact standards of review that we look for. So we have to recap conditions that were proposed by Bailey. We also have some other conditions that members brought up at the last meeting. So I'd like to open this opportunity to fellow planning board members to, if they have any questions of the existing conditions that have been written into the most recent memo that Bailey provided, this will be the opportunity of whether we would like to consider voting on them as a whole individually, or of course, changing or deleting out the ones that are proposed or adding new ones. So I'm not sure who would like to start first.
Can I just make a comment first?
Sure.
I just found a mistake here, where it says now therefore, page two, item number three at the bottom, it says, "Additional landscaping and vegetation as buffer along the westerly border of the property, see easterly border." That needs to be corrected. And that's a binding thing, so that needs to be corrected.
And that's on the agreement in the condition?
Yep.
Okay.
It's just before they sign it, just before the town signs it. It's this page right here.
I know that some of the residents have brought up that when the existing property is demolished, there could be a potential rodent issue, which is something I had mentioned, and I do not see it. Approval conditions, and also on number four, a clarification, it says that they must implement a post-construction monitoring program. When the site is fully operational, findings of this program shall be presented to the East Long Meadow Planning Board and submitted in writing to the Department of Public Works, but it does not indicate when it would be presented.
Bailey, I don't want to put you on the spot, but do you want to answer either one of those questions, just to clarify?
Generally, for any of the recommended conditions, you can add or subtract whatever you want, as important, you're making the decision tonight, so everything that I have recommended in the town as a whole, staff-wise, it's in writing to you, so.
Okay, so at least, starting with the second one, we could add, within a one year, so I think, so when the site is fully operational, findings of this program shall be presented, we can say, within one year, within two years. It also does say, is found a cause and need for pavement rehabilitation or improvement within the first five years of the site being fully operational, so we could add a sentence that makes it more clarifying, a year or two, from when it's fully completed. As for the issue of the rodents, I do remember, I know some folks brought that up. I was thinking about it just before our meeting. I'm not sure what type of condition we would be, I mean, we would be able to put in, I guess, and I'm not like an expert on rodents, so I definitely don't want rodents going to people's houses. That's, I'm not in favor of that, but I don't, I also, just from a technical standpoint, I'm not sure what would be, I guess, does somebody?
Our Board of Health.
Yeah.
A rodent control plan be forwarded to the Board of Health for their approval.
We could make that into?
A motion. So moved.
Okay.
Second it.
Okay. Do we want to, would we like to add that right now?
Yep.
And vote on that right now?
I would.
Okay, so just to recap, so a motion was made?
Motion was made that prior to demolition, a rodent control plan be developed and forwarded to the East Long Meadow Board of Health for their approval.
Okay.
Can I second it?
Okay. Motion's been made, motion's been seconded. Would, there's discussion. Would we like to make, should it be any more specific than that, or you think that's sufficient?
I think that's about it. I think that's the level of our expertise.
Yeah. Okay, fair enough. All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion on this condition? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries. Okay, so that is one proposed condition that we have.
I have someone, you get to it.
Sure.
As I indicated earlier, I went back and reviewed the public hearings a couple of different times, and if you haven't done it, I advise that you do it, it's very illuminating. So the very first speaker in opposition to this project was Mary Hurley, former Mayor of Springfield, former city councillor that had to deal with zoning and site plan and special permits. She said that the, felt that the traffic should only be allowed to take a right outside or from the property, so essentially away from the Fields of Chestnut. Originally, I was somewhat skeptical of that. Mr. Punderson then raised the same issue at the next hearing. And listening to those two individuals, I got in my car, and I looked at the road conditions directly. Originally, I was somewhat skeptical of that. Mr. Punderson then raised the same issue at the next hearing. And listening to those two individuals, I got in my car, and I looked at the road conditions directly in front of 330 Chestnut Street, from Chestnut to Shaker, Shaker down to Industrial, and then down to Benton. And I think that Mr. Punderson had made a very valid point, that those roads were constructed to handle truck traffic, more so certainly than the portion of Chestnut Street directly in front of the Fields of Chestnut. And I want to remind the people here, Fields of Chestnut residents are not the only individuals impacted. There are people that have residential properties along Chestnut Street on that stretch, who are also impacted. And they were also impacted when the 101 units currently at the Fields of Chestnut were constructed. And they were impacted when the roads were constructed at the Fields of Chestnut, when there was excavation, paving, electrical, carpentry work, so forth and so on. And if there's additional construction at Fields of Chestnut, they're going to be impacted as well, just as a reminder to everybody. So my recommendation for a condition is that there be no truck traffic from this site, from the corner of, I believe it's Benton and Chestnut, to 330 Chestnut, so that all the truck traffic associated with this site be, if they're coming from Long Meadow, that they have to go down Benton to Industrial, Industrial to Shaker, and they enter Chestnut from the intersection of Shaker and Chestnut, and that the driveway be established in a way, the driveway, I believe, currently proposed on the west end of the site, be slanted in such a way that they can only enter from that site, and they would not be able to enter coming from the west. So that is a proposed condition that I have. And it's really based about, upon the condition of the roads.
So, as a clarifying point, would you like it, so, would this be all traffic exiting?
Thank you for raising that. So I raised the issue at one of the original hearings about not hearing any concerns about the potential for 400 housing units, with the multi-use zone that we had worked on for almost two years. And I believe, and if I got his name wrong, I stand corrected, but I believe it was Mr. Berger who indicated that they were okay with pedestrian traffic, it was all about the trucks. So employee traffic, I don't, I don't want to restrict the employee traffic, but truck traffic, yes, because I think it would be detrimental for the roadway. And I think Mr. Kingston raised a couple of points with respect to the Jake Brake issues. I think Mr. Bolduc, Roland Bolduc, who was the absolute best witness throughout this entire hearings, made very valid points about being able to kind of ramp up their speed, and what impact that that would have as well. So I took that into consideration as well.
Want to make a comment, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
I hear what Mr. Denver's saying. Have to remember that we are a planning board, we are not a town council. Control of traffic on streets is not within our mandate. We can't do that. If we want to close a street to truck traffic, that's something that the council will have to take up, and consider it under the rules and regulations put out by the state for traffic. This is a public way, there are other businesses on there, and there are trucks going to Excel Dryer right now, and other businesses on that road, including American Saw. And so this will have an, to do that would have an impact far beyond simply the warehouse. But I just want to make the point that we are a planning board, we cannot set traffic rules and regulations for public ways.
So George, as I said earlier, I'm going to agreeably, or I'm going to disagree agreeably with you.
Okay.
Because we do have civil conversations on this board. So, number one, the slanting of the driveway so that you cannot turn into the lot, really kind of forces that traffic along there, and I am not proposing limiting truck traffic from American Saw or Lennox and XL Driver, XL Dryer, because they're not currently before us. I fully understand that for this project to work, the town council is going to have to give very serious consideration about certain rules of the road associated with all of the industrial areas in town. But, so, you can vote up or down on this proposed condition, but that's my proposal.
So would you, so would you like to make that?
A motion.
In a form, so, and it'll be read as all?
That all truck traffic associated with this property, including the construction of, if it passes, if it passes, be, from Long Meadow, be placed down Benton to Industrial to Shaker to Chestnut, and the driveway be slanted in such a way that vehicles could not accept, cannot enter the property from the west entrance of the property.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Now, just a discussion. I, I do understand the concern, I do though, also have a concern about directing it in one direction, I hear what you're saying. So that's just, that's, that's my thought. But, motion's been made, I don't know if anybody has any further comments on it.
Can I take some mic?
Sure.
So, it was clearly stated in the recommendation memo from town staff most recently, that it is not advisable to do this, so I just want to make it publicly known that it was stated in the memo, I don't think it's a good idea outside of, you know, getting a traffic engineer in here and studying it. Maybe that, maybe that's the way you could go, but if we were going to do this, we should have done that when we had a consultant to look into it.
So I read each one of the traffic consultant's report, and I'll be perfectly blunt, I wasn't really impressed with any of the mitigation measures that they had. And so I felt that I had to take it upon myself to go and look for that. All I heard was, we can fix the timing of the lights, you know, was a big thing. And then, physical improvements to the intersection of Shaker and Chestnut might need to be made, I understood that, and you might do some relining of the intersection. And that was it. I felt it was lacking.
So, is there any further discussion on the motion, or any amendments or anything? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
That carries three to two. Okay.
Is he nice?
Yes.
So I might need Mr. Leveque, or Mr. Bandini, or Vandini's, sorry if I featured your name. So you often see, mostly in urban parking garages, when you are trying to leave the parking garage, that prior to it allowing you to leave, there is a mechanism built into the driveway that pops up and does not allow a vehicle to leave until you've paid your money, so it stops all traffic. And if you try to, it pops your tires, we've kind of all seen those. There's been a lot of discussion in the public hearings about the backup of traffic at the corner of Chestnut and Shaker, and there's concern that people have about the queuing of trucks right there. So I would like to propose that there be a condition, that the exit from this proposed site have that mechanism, I don't know what it's specifically called, I tried to find it online and I couldn't find it, and it be, and with consultation with the Department of Public Works, that a timing queuing system be established, so it would not cause that queuing at that rate.
So I, I would be definitely personally open to the idea of it, I will say, we may want to potentially consider doing it if, if this application's approved and then a tenant comes, these tenants will have to come back in front of this board, we may want to consider doing it then, just a thought. Does anybody have some, any thoughts on this idea?
So Russ, you're saying that if you have that lined up, so to speak, with the timing of light, that the queuing will happen on the property instead of on the road?
Yes.
Okay.
So would you like to make that?
That's a motion.
That's a motion?
Yeah.
So a motion has been made.
I'll second it.
So I just want, can you just repeat?
You're telling me that.
Make it, make sure we all have it.
So in lay, in lay terms?
Yes.
Okay. That there be a mechanism that would limit egress from the property by the trucks, that would be timed with the traffic light at the corner of Chestnut and Shaker, so that there not be a queuing, if that's the correct term, of tractor trailers at that intersection.
Okay. Motion, seconded. Okay. Any further discussion on the condition proposed? Hearing none, will vote on this, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion carries. Do you want that?
There was also a lot of discussion about the safety of pedestrians on the bike path. I believe Town Council President Ralph Page was the individual who first raised this issue. And I believe that it be a condition that the developer, in conjunction with the town, establish a, help me, Pete, what?
I don't know, it would be a lighting system of some sort, I would think, where we'd have to stop traffic if people were crossing, I mean.
Along the bike, along the bike path?
Yeah. Where it crosses, where it crosses Chestnut Street.
You have that now. That there be an automated?
There is, there is a light, right?
Yeah, there is.
It's just a flashing yellow light, though, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay, so there should be a flashing red, a flashing, or a red light, if you want to do that.
You, you can add to that, though.
So there's a flashing yellow light there now, right, George?
Right. When the guest, they went in, they put it in.
So are you suggesting a stoplight, another stoplight?
No.
Just additional lighting, or, because it's there now?
Yeah.
There is light, yeah.
I believe Ralph used a, like a motion sensor, so that when somebody approaches it, it would automatically signal.
Okay.
Thank you. You can have Kim to explain.
It's reasonable.
Well, okay. I don't want to, I want to be careful about asking anybody from the audience to participate, just because.
It's a clarification, it's not.
He nodded. I said it was the motion sensor, he said it.
Okay, so I think that's all, that confirms it. So just as I get it correct, so, not changing the light itself, just?
Making it a motion trigger.
Making it a motion trigger, okay. Okay, would we like to make that, would you like to make that in a form?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Motion's been made, motion's been seconded. Any further discussion? There's a button there now, right? I personally think what's already there is sufficient, but definitely could be maybe something to consider. Anybody have any other comments on this? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. That carries four to one. All right, any further conditions, Russ, that you'd like to add? All right, let me take this to the other members, is there anything?
I'd just like to, the report does not specifically include all of the planning board members' suggested conditions as being part of it, and so I would like to move that suggested conditions, one, for a air quality study, two, for a noise study, and four, for idling trucks to use filters, be adopted as part of the overall conditions.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, so just to be clear, so it is the 15 previously outlined, proposed site plan approval conditions prepared by Bailey, and then, number one, number two, and number four, that you just stated, George. And that is a motion to approve all of them.
Right, we've already voted on three, so.
Already voted on three, yes. Would we like, I know you were mentioning for item number four, would you like to offer?
He's talking about these ones.
We're going to vote, I think the motion is, so all, all 15 proposed by Bailey, and then one, two, and four, from proposed by the members.
Yeah, and I want to amend number four for, so that there's, then I would like to amend number four, that there is a time restriction, or a time mentioned where, where they have to present within a certain time period. Yeah.
Would you like to add a year, like?
A year.
Two years, a year?
A year.
From when it's operationally?
From when it is fully operational, the findings of this program shall be presented to the Eslang Meadow Planning Board and submitted in writing to the Department of Public Works within one year.
So adding within one year. George, do you, now, great to accept it, do you accept the amendment?
Sounds good.
Bailey, did you?
So, just a, one other correction that Pete pointed out at the beginning to the agreement that's attached to one of the conditions I don't have numbered, was?
Page two, it's number three.
But the condition itself that refers to that agreement?
Oh.
It would just tie to that agreement, so the agreement just needs to be.
Attention.
So if you want, if someone wants to include that?
Okay. Do you want to offer that amendment, Pete? To change the, offer the change in the board?
Yeah, changing on page two, where it says, vegetation as a buffer along the westerly border of the property, it's the easterly border. So I, I.
And George, do you accept that?
I accept that, yeah.
Okay. All right, so we have had two amendments.
Just, no, on those amendments, okay, or on those.
So yeah, so we have the two amendments, we have the 15 proposed conditions by Bailey, and then, number one, number two, number four, from the memo of the planning board proposed conditions from the board members. Either one of you, looks like you want to?
I just, for the record, if we could restate the motion, I think, though.
Yeah.
I know it's, we just had a couple amendments, so.
I was going to ask that.
Sure.
I was going to ask if Mr. Pill has shared the proposed conditions with the individuals that you represent.
So everything has been posted to the town's website?
I, I know, that's good, but.
I mean, I don't.
Simple yes or no, would you?
I believe they were sent out, yeah.
Okay. We believe the answer is yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. So yeah, let's, let's, the motion was 15 conditions that Bailey proposed, three other conditions that other planning board members proposed. The amendments are in proposal number four of Bailey's conditions, adding within one year to the sentence, findings of this program shall be presented to the Eslang Meadow Planning Board. year to the sentence, findings of this program shall be presented to the Eslang Meadow Planning Board and submitted in writing to the Department of Public Works within one year. And then for the other item for the agreement, proposed agreement between, for town Eslang Meadow agreement to fund public infrastructure improvements under exhibit A, changing under number three, instead of, so additionally, develop or exercise good faith, reason discretion to affix additional maintenance vegetation as a buffer along the, instead of westerly, easterly border of the property. So two amendments offered on that motion, both have been accepted. Any further discussion? Any further amendments? Any further comments on the motion?
So the, just, no, just so the final, so this vote is all the conditions with the amendments or just the amendments?
All the conditions with the amendments.
With the amendments, because they've been.
So would you please explain to the audience that this is just not, this is not the definitive vote on whether it's a site plan approval or not?
This is adding the condition, just the conditions. This is not a final approval of the project. This is the conditions both proposed by Bailey, proposed by members of this board, and then it's offered by members of this board to go towards the proposed application, but not a final vote.
Which conceivably will be voted on.
Which could conceivably be voted on, yes. Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as read and discussed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that carries five, they are unanimously. Okay. So just to quickly recap, we have gone through the site plan, the review. We have gone through some discussion amongst board members. We have gone through newly proposed conditions, other previously proposed conditions, amendments offered to those conditions at this time. But it's ultimately only a small number kind of of options. We can either, if there are any other conditions to propose, or we vote, we can entertain a motion to approve or disapprove the application, or we continue. Those are kind of the options on this now left to us.
So I'd just like to give some observations after looking at those hearings again. So at our first meeting, which was September 22, 2022, McMahon Associates, which was the traffic engineer, indicated that the anticipated traffic counts would be 338 trucks a day with 528 passenger vehicles, so totaling 966 a day. Both Attorney Fitzgerald and Mr. Leveque both indicated that this will be a spec building with a tenant or tenants not known at this time. That holds to this, to today. We still have not been told who the tenant is. And as I indicated earlier, Mr. Leveque regularly appears in front of this board and Mr. Stratton's law firm regularly appears in front of this board. If they're lying to us, their reputation is mud in front of this board from this point forward. So I take them at their word. If they tell they don't know who the tenant is, I agree with them. Because there's, they've never given me a reason not to believe them. That's my opinion. Mr. Fitzgerald indicated that the warehouse isn't allowed as right, as a, allowed as a right of you, as a right in the industrial garden park district. Mr. Page from the town council indicated that these industrial areas of the town have been very long established for a very long time. In fact, Mr. Fitzgerald indicated the history of that property, that Package Machinery bought that property in 1948, long before I was born. I also took from that meeting, the original meeting, that they felt that 40% of the traffic would go west on Chestnut Street, 20% toward the rotary, 20% up Chestnut Street, and 20% south of Shaker Road. Mr. Kingston mentioned Amazon. Attorney Pill mentioned Amazon. And to this day, we don't know whether it's Amazon or not, according to the developers. This board voted to continue the public hearing, and we also require the developers to pay for an independent review of the traffic study. We continue the hearing to November 15 and December 20 because the traffic peer review had not been done. During the February 21, 23 meeting, VHB, who was retained by the town to do the independent traffic review, okay, presented to everybody via Zoom. I believe his name was Mr. Kaya Kanakis. Couple of things I took from Mr. Kaya Kanakis's testimony. He indicated that the McMahon report was professionally done. When Mr. Pill introduced his traffic engineer, Roland Michaud of MDM, something I took from Mr. Michaud's testimony, he indicated that the McMahon report was professionally done. When questioned about Amazon, Mr. Michaud said the following. I asked him about the potential for an Amazon at that site, and this is his quote. It's not typical to have a facility, an Amazon facility located this far from an interchange. And locally, we referenced the gigantic warehouse for Amazon right next to Bradley Airport. We also referenced the one that's about maybe a 200 yards off of Route 91 in Hoyoke by Hoyoke Mall. Mr. Michaud's colleague at another meeting, also representing MDM, after they indicated that they felt it was a professional study, that it was professionally done, he just indicated that he would recommending using a different type of program to study all of that. And he mentioned the work that the Department of Transportation, for Massachusetts, Department of Transportation had been involved in, in a number of other sites. He specifically mentioned Uxbridge. Uxbridge is a very tiny town on Route 146 going south out of Worcester. You are in nowhere land. I'm very familiar with Route 146. My son lives in Providence, and 30 times a year I go down and visit him. I take Route 146. There are multiple very large warehouses along 146, none of which are more than 200 yards from Route 146, which is a major transportation area between Worcester and Providence. Also at that hearing, we heard absolutely just wonderful testimony and respectful testimony from Mr. Saletti, from Roland Bolduc, who I'd mentioned earlier. Then I do have to reference testimony from a Don Cooper, who stood up and said, there's nothing wrong with more traffic smog. I'm not a cyclist, but if a cyclist gets hit, you know, it just gets one more person off the road. And that this thing is a big, fat, wet turd. In the 35 years that I've been involved in municipal government, on boards, on committees, or working for government, I must say that that's the first time I've heard something described as a big, fat, wet turd. So I say the following. Let's say, let's say a warehouse is built, and 25% of the anticipated jobs go to Eslang Meadow residents. Do you think those 75 people and those families from those 75 individuals are going to think this project is a big, fat, wet turd? Do you think the Eslang Meadow residents or businesses that are involved in the demolition of the current property or the construction of the new property? It could be demolition, excavation, electricians, plumbers, carpenters, the list goes on. And they get a chance to be subs there? Do you think those people are going to think this project is a big, fat, wet turd? I don't think that they're going to believe that. Other things that I found of real note that should be interested, and I'm just going to go back one more time to Ralph Page. He laid out a history of the industrial parks in Eslang Meadow and how they were put together and how they've always been industrial uses. And he felt that they should continue to be that way. Very, very interesting.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, one more thing. Mr. Pill. Something I took interest of you and to other people, specifically Ms. Gorley and her infamous thin data. Mr. Pill, at the February 21, 2023 meeting, introduced two consultants that he wanted to have. The first one, MDM, which I referenced earlier, that were very, very good. The second one, that I really do need to mention, Attorney Pill introduced Tim Kenny as his environmental consultant. He'd been a commissioner of the Connecticut and Rhode Island DEP, but no real experience in Massachusetts. Mr. Kenny says that there will be between 500 and 1,500 trucks. When questioned how he came up with 1,500 trucks, how he expects that number, because I questioned him on that, he leaned between Mr. Pill and Mr. Ruer, and he said, Dan Ruer gave me that number. I asked Mr. Ruer, where'd you come up with that number? And he spoke back, now, the sound got a little strange on this. I spoke with, I believe it Frank Parker was the name, Frank something, but. So in a courtroom, and this is not a courtroom, I think that's hearsay and double hearsay. And the point is, on all of this, we are required to review every single thing that you put in front of us. We review all the testimony from everybody. So we have two different traffic engineers saying the McMahon report is professional. I don't doubt that it's professional if two other consultants said that it was professionally done. I have no reason not, not to believe that. And then Mr. Pill says, this is a game of experts. I think his reference was, if it goes to court, it's going to be this expert against that, this expert. Fair enough, but this is not a courtroom. This is a planning board public hearing.
You are right. It is not a courtroom, and we are not judges. I'd like to also just add quickly my, my thoughts. I think that there's been a lot of testimony. I think there's been a lot of great testimony from the public. I just want to address two things that have went out into the kind of the public sphere. The first being, you know, regarding last, the last meeting, the public hearing, because of the unique nature of this particular project and because there is somebody representing a large group of people, and considering we have already had two full public hearings, people being able to speak, we have had months of opportunity of people being able to send emails, mail, any type of communication to the planning department, to planning board members, whatnot, I felt, to make it a little bit easier, that we would have just Mr. Pill. That was not to deny somebody the opportunity, and I certainly did not try to restrict Mr. Pill from speaking any longer than he should. But we do have to have some limits and some constraints. So if that came off as I was directing it personally, that was not the case. The second thing that I wanted to just quickly address was, there was a comment of mine referenced in the paper regarding my opposition or something of that nature to people, NIMBY, to not in my backyard. I understand that people are concerned about something that is in their backyard. My point was, there are people that frankly, and this goes for this project and any project, to have just complete outright opposition to any development in your backyard, that's not something we can seriously propose and do and implement as a community or as a board. We have to be able to consider these projects, other projects. And I just quickly said in a meeting that that, I don't know, I didn't agree with that. That was not to suggest or to demean the folks that have come here that have voiced legitimate concerns about this project. So I just wanted to correct that. So that was, that was what I wanted to say. I see we're kind of coming maybe potentially to, to an end here, but I wanted to give anybody else, if they have any thoughts.
I'd just like to state that I realize that we don't know the tenant, and so a lot of things are questionable. There's two things we do know. There's 100 loading docks, and the proposed, the proponents or the, the people that are introducing this to us have stated that they want to use the full and best, use, make full, the full and best use of the property. So that means that they, their intentions are to use those 100 loading docks all the time. I, I have no idea what it, what it takes to, how many loading dock changes it takes to turn a profit in a large building like this, but I would have to think that would be probably four times a day, and that's just my guess at it. So let's take that, that's 400 trips in, 400 trips out. That's 800 trips without any employees. So I just want everybody to realize that that is the fact of it. We don't know who it is. It doesn't really make any difference. The loading docks are there, and they want to use them fully. So you can expect a lot of truck traffic and employee traffic.
Thank you, Pete, but I just want to also let the developers know, as Mr. Stratton pointed out, that ours current zoning bylaws require that before a tenant were to come in, you have to come back to this planning board for approval. So your traffic counts, 338 trucks. This planning board can hold you to that 338 trucks. So as you're looking for tenants, you better keep that magic number in mind. Because if I'm still on this planning board, I'm counting tenant one, tenant two, tenant three, tenant four. It's not going above 338 trucks, at least if I'm on this board.
George, Cassie, did you want to?
I'll wait until we make a motion.
Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion for the purpose of discussion to approve the site plan review waiver with all of the conditions that have been voted on to date.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made, motion's been seconded.
Just to clarify, Russ said waiver, but.
Site plan approval. Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
I'd just like to comment. I think warehousing is an appropriate, is an allowed, appropriate and good use of the site. I am not happy with the scale of the project, but the site coverage and other conditions laid out in our zoning bylaws are being met. Given that, the tenants using the building will need to get a site plan review before starting to operate, I am inclined to approve this motion.
Would you like to say?
Wait till the vote comes.
Cassie, Russ? All right. So I don't have anything else to say either. So we have a motion on the application with the conditions that we have discussed. So all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Before I give my, my vote on it, I'd like to say to the proponents that I thank you very much for the, the way you've treated the planning board, and also to the opponents, the way you treated the planning board, it's been very respectful. I respect your enormous output of money and time in this situation, and I also respect what you want to do is rehab a property that is a nice store in the center of town. And I. And I, I understand that it is an as of right sighting. What I believe in as a resident, as a 71-year resident of this town and a member of the planning board is that nobody has the right to bring a project into town that could have very onerous effects on the town. And I'm talking about the traffic only, not the building, not the site, none of it, but the traffic. So given that and the way I believe in it, my vote is nay.
So that is a four to one vote in the affirmative that motion carries. Okay. Would we like to consider a quick recess, or would you like to continue?
I'd, I make a motion to a five-minute recess.
Motion's been seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, five-minute recess. Finish this up here. Okay, we have two items under other business. And that is 540 Summers Road, right, the first refusal. So Bailey, can you just give the board just a quick kind of surmising of this?
Yeah, so the request is made by the president of the council to just make sure this was explicitly stated in front of the board, that this land is being taken off of the 61A tax exempt, and so the town has the ability to acquire the property or purchase the property. We would have to pay for it. So either way, the planning board was sent this before the ANR approval that was endorsed by the board as well. So it was a couple of months ago, but we sent it out to you, and we typically just send it as an email, but I guess in the future, when I get them, I'll just bring it to the board and put it on the agenda so we can have a discussion. I don't know that we need a formal motion, but if you want to make one, go for it. But either way, discussion on, you know, the proposal.
If I may make a comment, we do have general guidelines in place for, for acquiring land in town, open space land in particular. Mostly it revolves around having access to it and to, the land would add to land we already own, so we'd end up with a whole lot of isolated parcels. And I don't think that this piece of land is, meets those, those recommendations. And I would personally feel that I would make a motion to not exercise, to recommend the town not exercise its right.
So motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seems pretty straightforward, in my opinion. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, that carries unanimously. Just last item, director support Bailey.
So just a couple of small things. I'll have at least three members sign the ANRs for tonight, that way I can get those out. And we also got a letter from the Hampton County Registry, just asking that we have each member who's able to sign for ANRs and other decisions, sign the letter that we have prepared, and we're going to send it to the registry, just so then have you as authority who can sign those documents. We're going to have to do this again at the next meeting. Or, you know, maybe we'll wait, but I'll just pass those around as I'm talking about the rest. Just the last thing, I am working on a couple of bylaw amendments, I'm going to send a couple of things out via email, and I just ask that you review them as you can. And just a couple of suggestions, some things that I'll probably put on the next agenda for discussion prior to me working on anything. And then, yeah, Nina's out for the next couple of days, basically all of this week, the rest of this week, and then next week a little bit. So if you have anything for me, I ask that you at least wait, if you can, if not, that's fine as well, but I'm running the show for a couple of days, so it's going to be busy, so.
I have faith you can do it. I want to first thank LCAB. Thank you for all the meetings, but especially meetings that definitely have some very interesting topics as of late. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion's been made, seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.
Good meeting.
Good evening.
Can we just reconsider?
So George, is this your official last meeting?
I don't know. If they appoint somebody, which I hope they will, it will be my official last meeting, yes.
Well, I think we certainly would be remiss to not recognize your years of service to not only the town, but certain, to the planning board. I believe you've been on this planning board for.
15 years.
Years. When I.
I wasn't sure when it was going to be.
When I came on, you were a wonderful, wonderful help to me, and then you, then you stuck me with the chairmanship for. But I certainly do want to recognize your assistance, your valuable guidance on a lot of different things, your knowledge is encyclopedic, encyclopedic of zoning ordinance here in, in Eslang Meadow. I've been, I think Bailey is the sixth planning person that I.
Fourth.
Well, I'm counting the town managers who stepped in.
Okay.
And the assist, or the help we got from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. So we're at least six there. And you were the, the guiding source through all of that. And I don't really think that we could have had all that turnover without your help. So I just want to recognize that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would like to say, George, if someone's going to fill your seat, no one's going to replace you. We love you, buddy.
I, I was going to say this at the sixth meeting, but George, you, I, I've been on this board for five years. I really love having you on. I take all of your opinions really serious. I really appreciate the advice and expertise you brought in making me feel welcomed here and giving me kind of an education on what it is about planning and community development. And you have been really such a beacon for this board, and it is going to be really sad to see you go, but thank you, thank you for your service.
You're very welcome, and you, oh. You're all very welcome, and you all have my phone number and email. If you want to ask me something, ask it, I'm, I'm available. But 15 years, I think, is enough for me on this particular board. I am continuing on the historical commission, so I'm not abandoning the town, and I look forward to seeing this board thrive with new members.
I'd like to order a pizza shop and beer.
All right. You're going to adjourn again, because I recorded all that.
Okay, good. Motion to adjourn.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, everybody.